The agenda for tonight's meeting has been published and made available. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the agenda?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Agostini?
I move to approve the September 10th, 2024 Regular Board Meeting Agenda.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Agostini. May I have a second? The motion has been made by Mrs. Agostini and seconded by Mrs. Washington to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? CNN Board Members, please vote.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Trapp?
I'm not logged in and it won't let me log in. Okay. Um, never mind.
Okay. Is everyone logged in? Okay. The motion is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. We will now move into Item 3.1 Executive Session. May I have a, may I have a motion to go into Executive Session?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. McFadden?
I move to convene an executive session for the purposes of discussing student appeals, student admission requests into the district's adult education program, breach of contracts, receipt of legal advice regarding Title IX regulations, and employment recommendations and certified releases.
The motion has been made by Mrs. McFadden. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. McFadden and seconded by Mrs... Who's that?
Agostini.
Mrs. Agostini, to go into Executive Session. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Mrs. McFadden, if you would, check the motion, please.
It is correct.
Board Members, please vote. The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. The board would now enter into Executive Session. May I have a motion to end Executive Session?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Trapp?
I move that we adjourned Executive Session at 6:01 PM and resume Public Session.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mr. Trapp and seconded by Mrs. Washington to end Executive Session at 6:01 PM and resume Public Session. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? There's no discussion? Board Members, please vote. The motion is six yes, zero no. Mrs. Nass was with us during Executive Session, but she had to leave, so I want to make a note of that. We will now move on to 4.1 Inspirational Moment, Pledge of Allegiance. Mrs. McFadden, will you please present us for Inspirational Moment for this evening?
Yes, ma'am. As you all know, it's been over two decades since 9/11. Many people consider characters like Superman, Spider-Man, and Batman to be superheroes. But my oldest son, Justice, has always considered the men in our armed forces, policemen and firemen, to be the real superheroes of the world. This was evident on 9/11, as we banded together as one America, where race, gender, and political ideology did not matter. The only thing that mattered was the human race. So my inspirational moment for this evening, I thought it would be befitting to start the remembrance of 9/11 with the Spring Valley J ROTC program to highlight their work and accomplishments and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. At the podium, I would ask for Mr. Major Gregory Perry. Mr. Perry is originally from Simpsonville, South Carolina, and is the youngest of two children of a widow. Being the first in his immediate family to go to the large college, he was very active in Clemson University's ROTC. He graduated from there in 1985 and earned a commission as a lieutenant in the U.S. Air Force. He served as an Air Force officer in various operations, financial administrative, and management positions, and retired in the Air Force after 20 years in October of 2005. After retiring from the Air Force, he directed the development of a 50-person staff and led a 500-person volunteer force as the Associate Pastor and Chief Operating Officer for the Living Word Church in Dayton, Ohio. In January of 2015, Major Perry relocated to South Carolina in Columbia and presumed, resumed his position as the role as the Senior Aerospace Science Instructor for the Spring Valley High J ROTC Program. He directs the activities of 150 cadets as he teaches and mentors students toward becoming better citizens. He is the husband of former Jackie Kinlaw of Manning, South Carolina, and the father of three sons and three grandchildren, Major Perry.
How about now? Much better? Again, good evening and welcome, and thank you very much for the invitation of being here. Madam Chairperson, Mr. Superintendent, it's a pleasure and need to be before you today. Before we get started, I want to take the opportunity to introduce to you and present to some others my crack cadet staff here that's with us today. Starting from my right here, we have our Group Commander, Senior Cadet Colonel Sherlene Sanchez-Romero. Go ahead and please stand. Our Deputy is Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Asher Infante. Our Operations Officer is Cadet Major Devon Carter. And our Executive Officer is Cadet Jayden Quinn. These are our senior staff members. I brought also with me our next tier of leaders, our Squadron Commanders. Cadet Major Brayden Dalton is our Operations Squadron Commander. We also have in color guard our Mission Support Squadron Commander, Cadet Dylan Carter. And then finally, our Aerospace Squadron Commander is also in the color guard, Cadet Major Alex U-Hall. Thank you so very much for coming with us. You may head us in. You know, I took the helm of ROTC here in January of 2015 and quickly learned that the success of the program is built on the backs of our precision drill team. And you know, they were second to none. So I took aim at really building a program that offered more of a rounded ROTC experience for them, where kids, everyone will have an opportunity to excel. So we built the Raider Team, we built the Cyber Patriots, Stellar Explorers, we breathed new life into our fledgling Kitty Hawk Honor Society, and you know, the program absolutely took off. 2016, we won the Outstanding Air Force J ROTC Unit for all the state of South Carolina, and there was a string of distinguished unit awards that we've won since 2017. Let's see if I got this still work. And... Okay, there we go. We build all of this based upon the fact of understanding to whom much is given, much is required. We set out to instill into each of our cadets the guiding principle, that he who desires to be great amongst you must first be your servant. So in a world where most teenagers are concerned about their cell phones, their jeans, food, their Jordans, we at ROTC say, we're going to be other people minded first. And so, we're purpose focused, and we embrace the concept the Air Force puts before us, the service above self. We've embraced the mentality that says, we feel it's honorable to serve your community. And so, that's what we do. We aim to do just that. So we forge partnerships in such, in such a point where we write letters to retirement centers and St. Christopher Carol's there, we read to the youngsters at North Springs Elementary, we deliver reefs for our fallen comrades at Reef Across America. We are committed to serving our community. We've partnered with my sister units here at District 2 for Harvest Pack and Spring Valley Baptist, and over the last five years, we together have built over 450,000 meals to be distributed in the Northeast community. We've consistently amassed over 2,000 hours since COVID, and last year, we topped even that at 21 hours of service. So what's the goal here? I went too fast. There we go. Ultimately, we want to make Richland 2 and Spring Valley famous throughout the entire state. How are we planning on doing it? We just recently presented at Darlington 500, nationally televised NASCAR event. We consistently work at WISTV-10, assisting their families, helping families for their telethon. And again, you know, I mentioned this before, but it just bears repeating. I inherited a phenomenal precision drill team, nine-time national champion, 18 consecutive state championships. That's what we had inherited. And that thing, everyone says, District 2, Spring Valley, District 2, Spring Valley. Since then, the team has returned to its winning ways, and we've earned a state title three of the last four years. Lastly, many of you, you're aware that we underwent a headquarters evaluation back last spring. They came in and evaluated it over 22 different criterias, and your District 2 ROTC unit earned the highest rating of exceeds, exceeds standards. 19 out of 22 possible rated areas, they are rated as exceeds standards. I want to turn our attention to academics, because after all, that's what we're here all about. 100% of all our ROTC units, all of our ROTC cadets, they graduate from Spring Valley. 100%. 100% of them are college and career ready, even to the point that over half of my graduating seniors enroll directly into college. Every year for the last five years, our cadets have either earned an ROTC scholarship, Academy Appointment, Air Force Academy Appointment, or a four-year scholarship to a Tier One school. Spring Valley, our District 2 brothers and sisters, we're crushing it with regards to doing this. Most recently, one of our own cadets, you see there, Sarah Hedley, she won the J-100 Scholarship for Leadership as the number-one rated cadet in all of Air Force J ROTC. It was a humongous honor for her. So what's next? We're forging partnerships. We absolutely are. What I want to share with you, though, that I'm really excited about, is that the Chief of Staff at the Air Force offers a $15,000 scholarship for any cadet that will earn its private pilot's license, get this without any commitment to the military. Oh, that's what I said. Clover High of York County has produced over 100 of these scholarship recipients, and 65 of them have gone on to earn their private pilot's license. These cadets are known nationwide for their skill and their accomplishment in flight academy. And this is where I want to take Spring Valley ROTC program. We stand at a phenomenal, at a door of a phenomenal opportunity. So, with that said, Clover High's Flight Training Partners, ACES Flight Training School, has opened a second office, watch this, in Lexington. And they are poised to offer Spring Valley and any District 2 cadet that's qualified an opportunity to earn ground school classes and flight training with the hopes of earning, turning it into a scholarship and ultimately, a private pilot's license. I envision, and I propose, that we would offer three early bird classes, Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, for an hour right before school starts, and then, three to five times between now and November, an opportunity for them to fly. Everybody gets about three to four hours of flight time, in attempt for them to be able to pass the avionics qualification training test, which ultimately will be the thing that will earn them, help them be selected for their flight academy. Can't you see it? I tell you. At the very minimum, District 2 cadets, accepting this opportunity, will earn the scholarship, and they will have a front seat at earning a private pilot's license, or even being exposed, really, to lucrative jobs in the aviation career field. Adding this additional opportunity to our program takes the Spring Valley ROTC program, in my opinion, to the next level, and bolsters our district's enviable record of preparing young people to lead in their communities. So as we look to the future, where do we see ourselves going? I can only imagine previous board members like yourselves, previous superintendents, dreamed of a multi-use building that would be state-of-the-art, be a beacon of innovation for years to come. Voila. I can only imagine they had a 10-year plan that says, we're going to have a performing arts center that will seat at least 1,000, maybe 1,200 members. You did it. Just like you guys, ROTC is dreaming, believing, and preparing. We see the program expanding and growing as we reach out to our feeder schools and to show them why ROTC is a great, great leadership enhancer, and how ROTC participation enhances their future successes. We see ourselves growing into the title of most-loved, most-respected, most-rewarding program at Spring Valley. To accomplish this vision, we see ourselves expanding, honestly, our current facility into what we believe is a multi-use, multi-level facility that will more than meet the needs of our ROTC cadets for decades and beyond. We see ourselves really gaining an indoor facility that will enable both our drill and our Raider Teams to continue practicing regardless of weather. We see an indoor track equipped with his or her shower and locker areas that will enhance our physical fitness, our Raider conditioning to get stronger and more competitive. We see a floor with a state-of-the-art semi-layers that will advance our aerospace program with continued training and experience. It could be used when ground school really is not in session. We see a practice area for our drone teams to own their skills and learn the mechanics of flying. And all of that, we've got to have a place to store it. I envision having a 30-by-30 logistics area that adequately, it plans on an opportunity to be able to safeguard all of our stuff. We see ourselves, honestly, if you're going to do this, you've got to have places for the kids. We envision having a cadet staff filled with comfortable seating spaces, a boardroom table, projector, whiteboard, large screen, LED TVs, desks, and even high-backed chairs. Yes, we spent some time thinking about this. Finally, we see ourselves with renovated classrooms, equipped with the latest in technology, adorned with durable carpet, wall paintings, and murals of air power and military might that inspire us all to ponder what can be. So as I get off the stage here... How can you help? Honestly, I need your assistance to bring this about. Spring Valley is going of our own, we're going to raise $64,000 for our operating budget. Okay? We've already secured the funding for $10,000 for our curriculum and action, our field trips our school has graciously given to us. We're going out to corporate sponsorship for our travel teams. Our drill, our Raider Teams currently unfunded, but I have every intent of seeking that funding, and we'll get that to do the things that we need to do. But you know, our promising partnership with ACES Flying School is currently unfunded. This partnership must begin in the next few weeks in order for us to meet our timelines. The application is due on the 14th of November. They've got a test prior to that, and so, I'm up against the gun here to get this thing done. The outstanding offer for Spring Valley cadets and the career potential for the rest of Richland 2, honestly, it's just too good to be shelved because you can't figure a way to find it. So I'm seeking the collective assistance of this board to make this happen. I believe this new partnership with our community will put us on par and honestly, above many of our elite school districts in the nation. Thank you again for the opportunity to share what your children, what your students, and my cadets are doing, how they're accomplishing, and ultimately, they're going to serve this district with distinction. Ladies and gentlemen, will you please stand for the presentation of colors and the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go, sir. Colors. Go, sir. Art. Forward. Art.
Thank you all so very much.
Thank you so much for that presentation. We will now move to Item 5.1, the Consent Agenda. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the Consent Agenda?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Washington?
I move to approve the Consent Agenda for the September 10th, 2024 Regular Board Meeting.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Washington. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Mrs. Porter. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? CNN Board Members, please vote. The motion is six yes, zero no. The motion passes. We will now move to 6.1, Public Participation. We will now move to Public Participation. Three individuals have signed to address the board. You will be given three minutes to address the board. To assist with timing, the lights on the table in front of me will change colors from green to yellow to red. When you have 30 seconds remaining, the light will turn yellow. When your time is up, the light will turn red, and you will hear a tone indicating your time to speak has expired. Before we begin, I will remind you that our meetings are streamed live and recorded. According to policy, B-E-D-H, comments from the public should not include gossip, defamatory words, or abusive language. The policy also prohibits in public session any expression of any person connected with the school system. Specific student or personal issues should be handled through the appropriate procedures as indicated in the district policy. Questions asked during public participation will be referred to a staff member for response at a later time. We will now call our first public speaker, and that is Kathy Franklin.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I'm from Pontiac Elementary School. I'm a member of the RTI team, and I've done assessments for kindergartners in the last few weeks. I was surprised when I went in the classroom and saw 27 to 28 5-year-olds in that classroom. It made me think of my son. All of my children went to Richland 2, they all graduated from Spring Valley High School. But I had a son who was in the first grade who was very shy. He was very soft-spoken. If he had been in a class with 27 children, he would have never approached that teacher and told her his fears and his lack of understanding in math. Well, he had this wonderful teacher, Joseph Hill, named Sandra McClain. We still remember her. My son's in his 40s. We still remember her because she took the time to do small groups, and we know that small group teaching binds that child together with the teacher, builds their confidence, and causes them to learn even more. And that's what happened with my son. He contacted her 10 years ago on Facebook to tell her thank you. He went on to be a educator himself. Now we at Pontiac Elementary with over 900 children, and our classrooms are running over. In the time when my children were at Spring Valley and all the other schools, the school board and the Richland County Council had a bridge together. When they built a development, they allowed that development to give free land to the schools so that we could build a school. Yes, we had to do the bond, you know, pay bonds, we had to pay the taxes. We wanted to do that because we wanted non-crowded schools. That's what's happening now. We've got houses on Percival and apartments that are zoned for a school that's already up to six buses in the afternoon. We need help. So I'm asking if you, the board, can bridge with Richland County and Council and bring about some changes so that when you develop an area, you give us the land also, so we can build new schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Franklin. Next, we have Brittany Watts. Is Brittany Watts here? Okay, we will move on to Angela Logan. Is Ms. Logan here? Angela Logan? Okay, I guess they decided not to attend. We will move on now to 7.0, Voting on Executive Session Items, Student Appeals. May I please have a motion regarding student appeals?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Agostini?
I move to deny the appeal for student number one.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Agostini. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Agostini and seconded by Mrs. McFadden. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Board Members, please vote. Well, let's check the motion once it comes up. Mrs. Agostini, is that correct?
The motion is correct.
Thank you. Board Members, please vote. The vote is six yes, zero no. The motion passes. Mrs. Agostini?
For student number two?
For student number two.
I move to deny the, deny the appeal for student number two.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Agostini. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Agostini and seconded by Mrs. McFadden. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Mrs. Agostini, please check the motion.
The motion is correct.
Board Members, please vote. The motion is five yes, one no. The motion passes. We will now move to Item 7.2, Student Admission Request into the District's Adult Education Program. May I please have a motion regarding the student admission request into the adults education, adult education program?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Washington?
I move to approve the student admission request into the district's adult education program for students 1 through 4.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Washington. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Mrs. Agostini. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Mrs. Washington, please check the motion. Board members, please vote. The motion is six yes, zero no. The motion passes. We will now move to item 7.3, breach of contracts. May I please have a motion regarding the breach of contracts?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Porter?
I move that we direct the administration to make a formal complaint to the State Board of Education regarding the professional employee who breached their employment contract with the district.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Porter. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Porter and seconded by Mrs. Agostini. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Please check the motion, Mrs. Porter.
It's correct.
Board members, please vote. The motion is five yes, one no. The motion passes. We will now move to 7.4, employment recommendations and certified releases. May I please have a motion regarding employment recommendations and certified releases?
Madam Chair.
Yes. Mrs. McFadden?
I move to approve the employment recommendations and certified releases as presented.
The motion has been made by Mrs. McFadden. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. McFadden and seconded by Mrs. Agostini. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Board members, well, check the motion for me, Mrs. McFadden. Make sure it's correct.
It is correct.
Board members, please vote. The motion is six yes, zero no. The motion passes. We will now move to item 8.0, new business, no action requested. The agenda item for 8.1 is our quarterly operations report on food services. Dr. Moore?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, as you are aware, we this year, past year, did a RFP for our food services. And we have a new contractor that is providing that service to our district. So I would like to ask Mrs. Nicole Burns, Coordinator of Food Service, to come up and present the update to the board.
Good evening. I'm happy to be here tonight, extremely nervous, however. I'm sorry, I'm a little short. I'm going to bring you tonight food service 101 updates along with some fast facts for this school year. Richland 2 will continue to participate in the national school breakfast, lunch, and after-school programs. We continue our partnership with the Food Service Management Company. However, this school year, we did start partnering with Southwest Food Service Excellence, also known as SFE, which you'll hear a little more about later in the presentation. With our partnership, Richland 2 is responsible for the district policies regarding food services. We're also responsible for monitoring the program to ensure all USDA guidelines are followed and we're responsible for all equipment in the kitchens, leaving SFE responsible for all things food and, most importantly, the people needed to ensure our students receive the best tasting nutritious meals possible. Each student in the district will have a meal eligibility of either free, reduced, or paid. There are three ways students qualify for free or reduced rate meals. First, being enrolled at a CEP school. The second, being directly certified through the state. And third, by a meal application. Our food service department is a business in itself and cannot be, our funds cannot be intermingled with other district funds. Our expenses consist of the equipment costs within the kitchens, the cost it takes to maintain the equipment, the cost to have SFE as our management company, and our uncollected debt. Our revenue consists of all federal reimbursements plus our payments made by parents minus the expenses. While participating in the national breakfast, lunch, and after-school programs, our nutritional guidelines are set by the Healthy Hunger Free Act of 2010. This act regulates nutritional standards of our meals served as well as any food served during the school day. This does include third-party vending machines as well as food fundraisers. This school year, we did utilize a waiver that allowed us not to raise the rates of the meals charged to students. However, the state does not have a waiver for adult meals, so we unfortunately had to raise adult meals by five cents for breakfast and 55 cents for lunch. The state did put place proviso 1.115, which will expire at the end of the school year. With this proviso, the students who are approved for reduced rate meals will not be charged the reduced rate for this school year. 25 of our 33 schools will continue with CEP this school year, which means all children enrolled at the CEP schools receive free meals regardless of household status. Schools qualify for CEP based on percentage of students enrolled that are direct certified through the state. Direct certification comes from households who receive SNAP, TANF, and Medicaid-free benefits. No applications can be accepted at CEP schools. All non-CEP schools accept meal applications from parents and students are qualified based on household income or by state certification. Shown here are free and reduced percentages as of August 30th. August of 2023, there were 18 serving days and we served a total of 235,721 lunches, which equated to be 55.98% of our average daily participation. This school year, we had 17 serving days in August. We served 237,082 lunches, which was 58.19 ADP. That's an increase of 2.21% ADP with one less serving day. Since August of 2023, I'm proud to report that we have made significant upgrades to our cafeteria equipment. These upgrades include steamers, combi ovens, merchandisers, proofers in all schools, Impender ovens in our secondary locations, tilt skillets, braising skillets, warming, and refrigerating holding cabinets. I think the representatives for SFE can agree that we have some of the most state-of-the-art commercial equipment available in our kitchens. And with that said, I'd like to introduce our resident district manager, Mr. Eric Young, and our SFE Director of Operations, Camille Bobb.
Hello, everyone. Good evening and thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. But I am, as Nicole said, my name is Eric Young and I'm the resident district manager for SFE. And to my left is Camille Bobb, our Director of Operations. What she just said is correct. These kitchens, whether you know it or not, are state-of-the-art. And I've seen kitchens in schools in 29 different states and nothing is compared to what you have. So, SFE, who are we? First of all, our mission. We put child nutrition first. SFE, the only thing we do is K through 12. That's it. We don't do any linen services. We don't do higher education. We specifically gear everything we do to K through 12. Our vision is a world where all children look forward to eating at school. Our guarantee, we stand behind our pledge to increase K through 12 program participation and revenues because we have learned our fresh, from scratch approach is fueling happy students. Direct meal participation. Excuse me, what separates us from others? What separates us from others is our partnership. SFE goal is to become an integral part of the community in which we serve, giving back from donating time, financial support that nourishes and dreams. Also, we do stock holiday food banks for families and SFE believes in giving back to the communities in which we serve. Sustainability. SFE works to promote a healthy planet by utilizing local vendors to reduce carbon footprint, minimizing food waste through batch cooking, and serving meals kids love to eat while also supporting local farmers and growers through reasonable sourcing practices. Let's talk about our staffing for right now. We have managed to put together some incredible passionate leaders, including myself, Camille, and we have an area dietitian. We have two area chefs. We have five district managers. We have 100% managers in all the kitchens in each and every school. And right now, we have about 80% staff when it comes to our food service employees, but in about a month, we'll be 100% staff. There's a great, great web of talent, culinary talent in this city, and we're going to expose that, even if we have to steal them from other places. So here's a couple of highlights this year. We've only been here about two months, but to the left is one of our chefs who we stole from another district, Chef Richard. This is a little cart he prepared for Ridgeview High School football players. And then in the middle, what we have done, we've rebranded all the schools, new signage, front and back. And then this is a snapshot of one of our lines, nice and colorful, flavorful. So we want to give the students, when they come down to eat, I want to see birthday eyes, as if they were unwrapping a president. I want to give you a food service program, not to show, but to show off. This is a couple of quotes we got from one principal. He actually texted Will and said, "I'm blaming you for the extra calories that I get from eating lunch in the cafeteria every day. I love this new food company and our food. More students and staff are eating." Thank you. And then the second one's from an elementary principal. "SFE was a great choice. Kids loving their meals." I haven't heard this, well, I haven't heard that in years. What's to come? So we already purchased a food trailer. We'll have it wrapped in about a month and we're going to use that for special events. Also, we're going to do some coffee bistros in some of the schools. And then we're going to have a nutrition education program. Our chefs are going to be excited to kick it off and what we call it is our roving chef and it's interactive experience communities. We're going to be doing some Thanksgiving meals, some farmer markets, and some cooking classes for parents and students and administrators. Thank you all. I appreciate your time, but just keep in mind, we are committed to this. And when I say committed, we are committed. I want you to think of that ham and eggs that you eat in the morning, where the chicken was involved in getting you the egg, but the pig was committed.
Thank you. And board, I can tell you that as I have been out, yes, the pig was very committed. And I thank the pig for that commitment. But as I've been out doing school visits and had the opportunity to go into our dining facilities and talk to students and talk to the staff, I've just heard great things about the food. If you remember, a couple, last couple of years, pizza had changed in schools. For those of you who still have kids in school and they didn't like the cauliflower crust and said it didn't taste like real pizza. But I was at a school on Friday where it was pizza day and all of the kids were eating their pizza. So I've heard nothing but positive things for what SFE has been doing. So thank you and thank you, Ms. Burns. And if there's any questions, we'll open it up.
Board members, are there any questions?
I have a comment.
Mrs. McFadden?
So ma'am, I know that you said that you had to raise the teachers or the adults' meals to 55 cents, but getting a hot meal anywhere for $5.80 is a good deal. So that is not a bad deal at all. And I know that someone had said that our teachers are eating because a lot of times they're eating a sandwich. But to go in and get a hot meal, $5.80 a day, that's a good deal. And my kids actually go to the lawn and eat it. They're eating sandwiches and things like that, so they love that stuff. So thank you all so much for the program that y'all came.
Board members, any other comments?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Agostini?
I have a couple of questions. Thank you for the presentation. When we were talking about the CEP schools in 25 of 33 locations, what about our magnet elementary schools? Would those be included with the middle school then, if the middle school is getting it? So our magnet schools also would be getting the free meals?
Yes. They fall under the same umbrella as the...
I think they want you to come and speak at the microphone. Thank you.
They fall under the same umbrella as the middle school. So all of our centers receive free meals with the exception of Muller Road. So Center for Knowledge North does not get free meals because they attend Muller Road. And Muller Road is not CEP.
Okay. All right. And then this is just a district question, I think more toward our superintendent. But we hit a buzzword, uncollected debt, which was an issue a couple of years ago. And wondering where we left it at last year and where are we now in terms of how we collect debt for students that don't pay? And I...
So our debt collections are pretty minimum. We are not allowed by state and USDA regulations to turn parents over to collections any longer. So the district, what we do is every Sunday, there is a mass call that is sent out and it notifies the parents of their students' debt. And those go out Sunday around 6:00 PM. And then occasionally throughout the school year, we will run them on Wednesdays as well.
And this can be sent in a board brief, but I'm just wondering where we ended up last year, at the end of the year, the fiscal year. I'm sorry, I'm just thinking of this question, but if we could be notified of that, I would appreciate it.
We're currently sending at about 500,000 of uncollected debt.
From last year or what's the timeframe?
Uncollected debt rolls from year to year. So it just rolls continuously until it is eliminated after three years of sitting in uncollected.
Per the state? Is that what it is?
That's per our district policy. That's how we have done it for, I don't know, 10, 10-plus years.
Okay, thank you.
Board members, are there any other questions? Mrs. Porter?
Yes, I just wanted to echo some of the statements that were said earlier that the food is great and I hear from students the same thing. And my own personal child wants me to drop him off early to get in line for breakfast. And when he gets in the car, I want to get straight to business about the classes and first we have to cover what he had for lunch. So thank you for everything that you do and I love your future plans.
I do want to say also about our pizza because really proud of this with SFE. The pizzas that the kids are eating in the cafeteria are primarily homemade pizza. So it's not, we do still serve some frozen pizzas throughout the week, but primarily they are homemade, fresh, proofed dough, handmade pizzas. So we're proud of that.
Board members, are there any other questions? I'll just make one comment myself. The lunch is delicious. I had an opportunity to eat week before last and it was so amazing because one of the principals said to me, "Oh, I haven't seen you sit in the cafeteria and eat in a while." So now I'm back in the cafeteria, so thank you. The food is delicious. So thank you guys so much for that. Okay, we're going to move to item 8.2, superintendents' back-to-school report. Dr. Moore will present to the board.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, it's hard to believe that we are already at day 23 out of 180 school... Well, it's hard to believe that we are already at day 23 out of 180 school days. It has been an exciting time for our students, teachers, staff, and the district. Now, I know I have eight minutes. It's going to be very challenging for me to get it done in eight minutes, but I'm going to do my best. But the problem is, you know, when we start bragging about Richland 2 School District, it's hard to stop. So I want to first personally thank every member of our school community for your hard work and dedication, which has made this year so successful so far. So let's start with our 2024 Back to School Report by looking back at the Convocation. So for the first time in our newly constructed state-of-the-art Performing Arts Center, we hosted Convocation in front of a live audience. We were thrilled to have a student, have student representatives from Dance, the Dance Line at Westwood, the Ridgeview World Percussion Ensemble, the Spring Valley Cheerleaders, and the Joint JROTC Color Guard. And how about this man? This young man almost needs no introduction, but by now, many of you know Isaiah Hollins. He is now a sixth grader at Dent Middle School, but this summer, he was the keynote speaker at the Abbott National Summer Institute in Florida. His incredible personality, infectious smile, and winning way with an audience made him the star of the show and the star of Convocation this year. Convocation is an opportunity for everyone, not only to get on the same page, but to begin writing history in a way that makes each of us define a personal responsibility through conscious discipline when it comes to our work. I want to remind everybody to please be a marigold and not a walnut tree. Two days later, we hit the ground running for our Back to School Bash. Last year, we had the pleasure of serving 2,400 people. But this year, more than 6,100 people showed up to learn about Richland 2 and the services designed just for them. On August the 7th marked the first day of school for more than 29,000 students and 4,000 employees. Now, for more than 103 years, Richland District 2 has been educating students. And I feel confident in saying that these students that we have today are bringing something to the table that we haven't seen before the history of the district. So the first day of school, if it wasn't exciting for you enough, guess what? We got to experience Tropical Storm Debbie to keep us on our toes. And out of abundance of caution, we made the right decision to close schools on that Thursday so that our staff and students were safe. But we were back in classrooms the next day, learning, 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 and learning from great educators, as you can see in the video, from our four District Teachers of the Year finalists. And I'm so proud to announce that today, I was there to surprise Spring Valley High School Rona Stewart, who is our Richland 2 School District Teacher of the Year. So we are going to have a fantastic school year, full of learning, growth, and success. But now, let's break down the numbers. So as you will see here, our total enrollment is over 29,000 students. We are a predominantly minority district with 62.8% African American, 14.9 of our white students, Hispanics make up 13.3, and our Asians are 2.6. Our student population in our schools, as you can see, is the largest number in our elementary schools, followed by our high schools, with middle school being the smallest number with over 6,000. We have 56 languages spoken in our district, which is why the multilingual learners program is so important to us. So we currently sit at about 6.8% of multilingual learners, as well as our students with IEPs. That number has increased to 12.7% of our population. And our pupils in poverty are sitting at 63.9%. Now, people always ask, why is that so important, Dr. Moore? Well, we're going to talk about that for just a moment. But this heat map that you see in front tells you where our students in poverty are located. And you will see, they're spread out across our district. Some areas are a little more concentrated than others, but they are pretty much throughout our entire district. And what does that look like over a five-year trend? It is that we have significantly increased our numbers. From 1819, we were at 54%, and now we are sitting at 63.9%. And this is based on our 180-day count, which directly ties back to our previous presentation around CEP status and feeding our students to ensure that their bodies and minds are prepared to learn every day. So our pupils in poverty has become one of our top indicators because we know, based on research, that when our students come to us with challenges every day, that it does impact their academic performance. However, we do not let that keep us from helping our students excel because we know that they're capable of doing great and wonderful things. Tied to that, though, is student mobility, which follows very closely. And as you can see, our student mobility rate is pretty high, especially at the elementary. And that's just one of the challenges our families deal with when they are in poverty or in that particular status. So we track that data, and our social work team does a great job working with them. We are also a very military-friendly community here, and we definitely appreciate the service of our men and women. But also, we recognize that our military children do not choose to serve. They're born into service. Mine were born into service when I served. And therefore, we make sure that in this district, long before I came here, we do a great job to take care of our military families. So as you can see, some of the statistics that are there around our military family. But know this, that we have the highest military-affiliated population in the state of South Carolina, with 1 in 5 of all military children right here in Richland 2 School District. And the three schools you see there with Blythewood High School, Blythewood Middle, and Pontiac Elementary have the largest military student population. Next, you will see our vacancies. As I've shared previously before, we have less vacancies this year than we've had in the past, even with adding additional units to our FTEs to our district. We do have higher numbers in high school compared to last year, but in middle and elementary, we're doing pretty well. We've made a concerted effort, thanks to the board and your support, with a salary schedule that is competitive with the surrounding districts. We have been able to not only retain our teachers, but also recruit new teachers. We do have some shortages, though, in our non-classroom certified personnel, which would include our psychologists, speech pathologists, RTI interventionists, and school counselors. But we are working very hard to fill those positions. And as you know, we are purpose-driven in Richland 2 so that our students are future-ready. We believe every one of our students can proudly say that I am connected, engaged, supportive, and achieving because our core values are belonging, learning, continuous improvement, and joy. And joy is what brings us to work every single day. The joy we see on our students' face, the joy we know that we're making an impact in their life, the joy that we know that we are shaping the future because we are purpose-driven so our students are future-ready. Thank you.
Great job, Dr. Moore. You watched that time clock, so I'm so proud of you. Thank you so very much. I can tell. Board members, are there any questions? Any questions, board members? Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Agostini, that's okay.
I have a couple of questions, and I think we'll need this in a report. When I'm looking at the staff, I am curious to know how many teachers we have on staff that are teaching virtually, and also how many foreign teachers we have? If we could, if the board could get that information.
Do you have that information to share tonight? Okay, so if you can just get that in the board doc to us, please. Yes, thank you. Any other questions, board members? If not, we're going to move on to 9.0, Agenda Items for Next Meeting. Dr. Moore?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We will have our next regularly scheduled board meeting on September 24th, 2024. The meeting will be called to order at 5:30 PM. We will then move to Approval Agenda, followed by Dismissal to Executive Session. Executive Session will include Student Appeals, Student Admission Request into the District's Adult Education Program, Receipt of Legal Advice, which is a litigation update, Employment Recommendations and Certified Releases, and Release Back to Public Session at 6:30 PM. We will then move to our Inspirational Moment and Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the Consent Agenda, which will include Approval of the Consent Agenda, Approval of Minutes from Previous Minutes, Classified Employment Releases, and In-District Transfers. Then we will have Public Participation and do Voting on Executive Session Items after we conclude Public Participation. The voting would include Student Appeals, Student Admission Request into the District's Adult Education Program, Employment Recommendations and Certified Releases, and as needed for items discussed in Executive Session. We'll then move to New Business Action Requested, which will include the selection of delegates for the South Carolina School Board Association's Delegate Assembly. Move to New Business No Action Requested. The board will receive a 2023-2024 Elementary Achievement Report, followed by an Update on Reading Instruction. Then we'll move to Agenda Items for the next meeting. We'll review the draft agenda for the October 8th, 2024 Regular Scheduled Board Meeting, and then move to our If Needed Items, which would include Public Participation, Executive Session, Voting on Executive Session Items. We'll conclude with the Board and Superintendent Comments and Adjournment.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Board members, are there any revisions or additions you would like to see made to the next meeting agenda or to a future agenda?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. McFadden?
So I'm not sure if the elementary, middle, and high school achievement reports will reflect the strategic plan, but if there's a way that if we need to do that separately so we can see where we are from year to year, we have a new plan in place, so if we can see the bounce for each year and where we're keeping up at, or if that is included with that achievement report, that's fine. But if not, just something separate.
Dr. Moore, can you address that, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. We have separated the reports to elementary, middle, and high. And so, yes, we will tie that back to our strategic plan that we shared during Convocation.
Board members, any other board members? If not, we're going to continue to move. We don't have anyone signed up for second public participation, and we've completed everything we needed to do in the executive session. So we're going to move to Item 13.0, Board and Superintendent Comments. I will start with Mrs. Agostini.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. First, I want to thank Major Perry and the Spring Valley High School JROTC for coming out and presenting the colors tonight. For years prior to COVID, we had each high school come and do it. And I was just reminded and shared it with Mrs. McFadden. So I'm hoping that that will be a tradition that we continue, that each high school come and present the colors at some point during the school year. Also, congratulations to Mrs. Rona Stewart for being named the Richland 2 Teacher of the Year. It was thrilling to be a part of that celebration. Now, onto my homework. At our last meeting, Dr. Scott, I didn't forget, I was asked to come back with a thought on what I learned from our leadership training. And as I reviewed my notes, I learned many things, but the one thing that I stuck, that stuck out to me was not something new, but just resonated with me. And that was, and reinforced, doing the right thing. For a number of years, I've been asked to talk at Spring Valley High School's National Honor Society when they're doing their induction ceremony. And for many of you, you know that there are four pillars. And I've always been asked to talk about the pillar of character. And in that, I talk about, one, doing the right thing, two, honoring your word, and three, what do you do when no one is watching? And tonight, I'm going to just share with you what I talk about when I talk about doing the right thing. I was a little nervous, these are high school kids, but I was assured and told that I was brought back because doing the right thing was an issue and one I had to talk about the sponsor felt was very important. Students these days are faced with many challenges, particularly with nonstop access to social media and constant peer pressure. Often, many go along to get along, failing to speak up or to do the right thing. Years ago, my son, Thomas, became an RA, a residential advisor, in his dormitory at college. As he prepared to leave for school that fall, I shared with him some difficulties and challenges I thought he might face while assuming this responsibility. One being, a student who makes a bad decision and may overindulge in alcohol or drugs. At some point, I told him, you may have to, you may have residents, friends, fraternity brothers, or fellow athletes that are going to encourage you to let this kid sleep it off and discourage you from seeking help as they worry about their own consequences. I said, if ever in doubt, seek medical attention, get help. While it may be uncomfortable at school, you may lose some friends, you may need to transfer schools, I can assure you, the last thing you ever want to do is to tell a parent their child is no longer living because of your failure to act, your failure to do the right thing. Even under pressure, even if it is unpopular, have the courage to stand up, stand alone, vote alone, do the right thing. As a board member, I take that very seriously, whether it be following Robert's Rules of Order, Board Policy, South Carolina State Statute to Include FOIA, or federal law. I am here to follow the rules and do the right thing. And I will leave with, on the end of the eve of 9/11, I will close with, never forget. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. Mrs. Porter?
Thank you for that. Ms. Agostini, thank you for your words as well. One of my favorite character traits is integrity, and that's doing what's right when no one's looking. I also wanted to mention something that I've been fortunate to be around many middle schoolers lately. And I am amazed at how many of them are on social media. And I had a conversation saying, you know, there's this checkbox that you have to check that says you're 13 or older. And I'm thinking a lot of people are just not paying attention to that. I want to challenge everyone, when you're with your friends and they have children and middle schoolers, to remind them of that checkbox and say, you know, if your child's on TikTok or Instagram, chances are, a checkbox got checked and they're not 13. So we can hold each other accountable, we can ask our community members to help. It starts there because from one action to another, it becomes bigger and worse for our young adolescents. So as adults in the room and as community members, we can help each other out by asking each other those questions. Do you allow your child to get on social media at what age? And are you aware of this? But I've, it's been brought to my attention that we should do a better job as a community to ask some of these tough, tough questions of our friends and our dear loved ones and the people we associate every day. And it will help our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Porter. Mrs. McFadden?
So I just wanted to say that I seen something yesterday that was kind of sad. It was the death of Mr. James Earl Jones. A lot of us know him from Sin by the Lion King and a lot of other movies. But I didn't know that he was also the voice of Darth Vader. I don't watch anything Star Wars or anything like that, but my husband does, and he brought me the cup. He's got a cup and everything. He's like, this is the voice. And I thought about it, and I thought, okay. So just want to put that out there, that he died in 93. He lived a great long, well, from what I know, he lived a great long life, a legacy to continue even now. So just wanted to get, give honor to him.
Thank you, Mrs. McFadden. Mr. Trapp?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm still thinking about not knowing Darth Vader was James Earl Jones. They're just things we take for granted, you know? I did have the opportunity last week to follow the superintendent around and visit some schools. And I wish that I could tell you how good the food is because we went through cafeterias, but that's what we did, we went through them. We didn't, we didn't slow down long enough, and that was bad for me. I like to eat every two hours, and I didn't eat all morning. So in the future, I'm going to have food in my truck so that I don't go hungry because I don't want to slow down. So, but it was really good to be out in the schools and visit with the students. But it was really good to be out in the schools and visit with the students and teachers and the principals. I forget which school it is, but one of our principals, she was really fast. Which school was that, Dr. Moore? That was...
It was Sandlapper.
Yes, ma'am. She made me tired just listening to her. But it's really, really good. We have some very good people out there running our schools, and our teachers, too. So grateful to our teachers for what they do every day. I was just impressed with everything I saw, and I just want to congratulate everybody on the wonderful job they're doing. And also, Major Perry and his cadets tonight. I'm just blown away at some of the things we accomplish in this school district. Of course, I don't know if you see it at home on the video or not, but one of the cadets, I think, has a full mustache. That was very impressive to me because I still can't grow one. But we can do a lot of good things here, and I want to congratulate and thank everybody. Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Trapp. Mrs. Washington.
So I just want to say, give a huge shout out to my alma mater Cavaliers Football Three and O. Keep up the good work, and to all of our football teams, keep up the good work, the leadership and the teamwork. Twenty days in, I cannot wait on Monday to start visiting, doing my school visits. This, well, the week is, I was about to say this past week, but we're still in the week. Yesterday, I had an opportunity to go to the COSPA conference. And COSPA, I always have to read exactly what it says. It's the Consortium of State Board, School Boards of Associations. And so we met with staffers, and we heard from the Deputy Secretary, Superintendent of Education. We heard from many people at the federal level, what were some of the priorities. And I wanted to take a few, just a minute, to share some of the highlights from what they talked about. So IDA is turning fifty. And when this went into law, it was, it's in the law that it's, you know, required to be funded up to forty percent. I had an opportunity to hear a presentation from our special ed department, and our numbers are constantly increasing, but we're not getting the funding. And so we were a room full of school boards from all across the nation demanding that we get our full forty percent. Because when we are increasing the number of students that need that support and that money is not fully funded, it's going to impact our bottom line and our school budgets, our district budgets, because now we're having to pull from that general fund budget to be able to fund some of those things that our students need. The other thing, and it was so good to hear from our student, about student nutrition because that is what they're talking about at the Capitol, Capitol, day in and day out, wanting to make sure that school districts are feeding students and that the food is healthy food, and it's farm-fresh, and it's, you know, from the farm to the table, you know, fresh. So it was great to hear this presentation tonight because I was like, oh, that's Richland Two. We're good. But one of the things that they did say that really, really excited me is that they're focused on increasing the reimbursement rates of how we're getting paid for our students, but as well as childcare meals. Many childcare facilities are only able to feed students one hot meal and a snack. And then the rest of that money has to come out of their budget. And so they're also looking at fully funding and giving more money to childcare that participates in those programs, and then also reducing the threshold for community eligibility programs. So we have twenty-five schools. They are championing that they're pulling down those requirements so that they could be, so that we'll be able to have more schools across the nation that are eligible. Mental health and safe schools, of course, because they go hand-in-hand. But really looking at, are we providing the wraparound services that every, every, not some, but every student needs in order to be successful? And making sure that we're funding those initiatives, especially mental health, because when school districts have crises, whether it's a cyber attack, which is increasing every single day across the nation, or whether it is what we, you know, we heard in the news on last week, there are mental health components that go along with that that need to be funded, that need to be provided, and many schools don't have those resources or the funding. Title II is always on the chopping block, y'all. It's something that they're always talking about cutting. We're going to get rid of Title II funding. I even heard that they were talking about getting rid of Title I funding. And I was like, are you serious? But anyways, so that deals with principal and teacher development. And they are championing that, championing the fact that in order for us to retain more teachers, we've got to put more money into recruiting more teachers. The U.S. Department of Education has seen record numbers across the nation of school districts saying, we're going to put more money into our salaries so that we can recruit them. But now we need to fund initiatives so that we can retain teachers. The work conditions is something that they're talking about at the federal level. It is not just a South Carolina thing. It is everywhere. But they're talking about it at the federal level because they're looking at how it is impacting our teaching and learning. And then another hot topic, which was surprising to me, but they're talking about science of reading. Now, I know that at the educational level, in our schools and in our districts, we're talking about those things. But to hear them have these honest conversations of wanting to know, what is it looking like in districts, and where are we seeing success? What are those students like, not pocket success, but what are, where are we seeing transformation? And how do we need to better fund some of these initiatives? High schools, are we actually designing high schools? Not buildings, but the actual school cultures and environments to meet the needs of what's coming in the future for our students? When I heard the major talk about the aerospace program, to me, that is meeting the future needs because this is creating another pathway for a student who says, I may not go to college, but I now am able to become a private pilot. This is now an alternative route, another route for a child to be successful. And that's what they're talking about. And then finally, what really warmed my heart was they talk about, let's stop putting burdens on K through twelve and putting policies in place that create burdens, and we don't fund it. I wanted to run around that room and shout. And I wanted them to pick up the phone and call South Carolina at the State House and remind them, let's not do that in South Carolina. Because that is one of the things that happens all the time, is we get these bills that are put in place, but we don't get the money to fund them. And finally, there was something that stood out to me that the Deputy Secretary said, and I just want to end on that note because it's something that I want to make sure that I am committed to, doing in my service to Richland Two, and that is working hard, being kind, dreaming big, and giving no excuses for Richland Two. You all have a great evening.
Thank you so much for that report, Mrs. Washington. Dr. Moore?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I said most of my items during our back-to-school, but I want to go back to one of the points that you raised last week about our homework. And, you know, it was deliver the mail to the person that it is addressed to. And something that one of the leaders said to me this week when I was running Mr. Trapp and Ms. Agostini around, we were moving, going to lots of places. There's video that shows us dancing and on the floor, not getting up off the floor. We don't show those pictures in public. But one of the principals talked about giving flowers to people now. And so I just want to recognize our Senior Chief of H.R. and our Senior Chief of Finance and their departments for all of the work that they did over the summer around our salary and compensation study. It's not perfect. The message wasn't as clear as we wanted to be for everyone. But the fact that we were able to get that done in a short period of time, a project that has been on the books for multiple years to address some disparities, I believe they deserve their flowers today. So I want to publicly say thank you to Dr. Franklin Foster and to Nancy Williams, our Senior Financial Officer, for their hard work and to their teams. You know, one day, we did close the district early because of weather. I stayed late. I walked this building. There were two floors that still had people on it, and it was the finance side of the building and the H.R. side of the building that were there at seven o'clock. They're here on Saturdays, and they stayed that night because they needed to get payroll out. They're here on Saturdays. They are working when a lot of us are at home. So thank you.
I tell you, Dr. Moore, you are getting better and faster and just, man, I like this.
It's good leadership.
Thank you so much. We are on point. Well, I think my colleagues have basically said everything. But before I give my comments, I first want to recognize my, one of my best friends who's here tonight. This is her first time ever coming to a board meeting. So I do want to recognize one of my best friends, Dr. Pamela Harvey Cox. Please stand. That's one of my best friends since sixteen years old. And we're talking about friendships. We go way back. So, Dr. Cox, thank you so much for being here this evening. Also, I'm thinking about Major Perry, and I loved his idea. And Mrs. Washington basically talked about that because people were saying, what does the future look like for Richland Two? That's what the future looked like. Part of that, and Kate, you guys know that I'm a former Kate teacher, and I'm all about Kate, welding, auto mechanics, you know, the fire. What is that program at Westwood?
Fire Academy.
Fire Academy and all those things because we, cybersecurity. Because we know not everyone is going to college, but we need to prepare them as if they are going. But we also need to give them opportunities to be ready for the workforce when they go out there. So I'm so excited that Major Perry in ROTC is already dreaming big for us. And it's something that we can do. He stated it. If we want it done, we can get it done, and we can find the funds to do that. We found funds for other things. We can find funds for that as well. And then also, I want to just recognize Matt Sherman. You guys know that we lost one of our gentle giants. And I tell you, I had an opportunity to not only spend time with the family, but to go to the beautiful Homegoing service for Troy TJ Moore and just continue to keep his family lifted in prayer. She's one of our teachers here in the district, behavioral specialist in the district. So continue to pray for that family. But I must say that the support from a district office level, teachers who worked with Mrs. Moore at Ridgeview High School and some of the other schools in Blythewood, they were there, y'all. The football and the basketball team, they took up almost one side of the church with just compassion, love, and support. And that's what Richland Two is about. Not only are we about the joy, but we're about supporting one another and being sincere about it. I saw so much compassion, sympathy, and empathy at the services of TJ. And I just want to say thank you to the district office staff that was there. Thank you to the teachers, the students, Matt Sherman, his admin team, and the teachers. We love you and we appreciate you. So as I said before, continue to keep them lifted in prayer because they're going to need that. And with that, may I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Washington.
I move to adjourn the September tenth, two thousand and twenty-four regular board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's probably, yes, yes. I'm getting ready to get that. Board members, the motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Mr. Trapp. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Board members, please vote. We'll do a hand vote. I show hands. We're taking a hand vote. All in favor? Six yes, zero no. The motion passes. Thank you. The meeting is adjourned.